Okay, I think we're set. And we're on. All right, welcome, everyone. I call the June 26, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide, is a public hearing to provide an opportunity to comment on the current draft of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan. The current draft incorporates the latest information and input from all the work completed to date, including previously received public comments. As part of the legislative process, this public hearing will provide the Planning Commission with an additional opportunity to, with additional community input that can inform their recommendation to the City Council on the preferred land use alternative. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. City of Bothell is providing an option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. Those participating via Zoom, the chat and question functions will not be available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We also have public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting this time is for comment, is for comments on issues not scheduled for hearing on tonight's agenda. Please limit those comments to three minutes, and please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Please remember this during your comments. If you have comments regarding our study sessions items, our study session items, that would be the time to make comments on the comp plan. Nope, no study session this time. I should have deleted that boilerplate. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 PM today. Those wishing to submit written comments were also asked to submit those comments by 3:00 PM. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged. And my understanding is we did not receive any comments before that 3:00 PM time. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the sign-in sheets that are in the door there. So if any of you would like to comment, please do indicate that. The Imagine Bothell Notice, City website, and tonight's agenda all provided opportunity to the public for providing, information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. The call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone may follow along. At this point, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones is absent and excused. Commissioner Westerbeck?
Here.
Commissioner Lever?
Here.
Commissioner Robson?
Here.
Commissioner Sills?
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Here.
In addition, Jason Greenspan, Community Development Director, and Christian Gates, Deputy Community Development Director, are in attendance. We also have Steve Morikawa from Public Works attending. And we have Rami, our City Council member, monitoring. Pronounce your last name.
That's not Rami.
It's not Rami. That's, oh, no, it's, yeah. Hmm? Thierry from Public Works as well? Yes, attending. So, thank you. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For commissioners, at specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate that by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second emotion, or participate in debate. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is public comment. City has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those speaking will have three minutes. Written comments submitted to staff no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all commissioners and are part of the record, and again, we have not received any. So we'll move on from that. This time is for items not on tonight's agenda. Please reserve your comments on the Comprehensive Plan for the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on an item other than the Comprehensive Plan? Seeing none, we will move on, and I don't see anyone on Zoom either, correct? Check if they want to comment on other than the comp plan. Okay. So the first item before us is the approval of the June 5 minutes. We have the June 5 minutes before us. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Commissioner Lever, I move to approve.
Commissioner Lever moves to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Commissioner Sills, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve tonight's minutes. Any discussion around the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, the June 5 minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing on the Imagine Bothell 2024 Comprehensive Plan. This public hearing will be conducted in accordance with the adopted Planning Commission bylaws. Individuals will have three minutes for comments. I didn't get the, I'm offline. I didn't get your summary. So the Comprehensive Plan does dictate the direction of the city for the next five years in detail and looks out 20. Staff will give us a presentation, and from there, we'll take the comments. Didn't update my, I'm offline.
Okay. Good evening, planning commissioners. It's great to be here. I'm Christian Gates. I'm the Deputy Director with Community Development, and I'm going to kick off this brief presentation, and then Jesse Hartman, our consultant from Burke, will, will carry on with a lot more, more detail. A lot of work, as you mentioned, has gone into this Comprehensive Plan work. And tonight, we're here for an action step, holding a public hearing with the Bothell community, and want to make sure that we, everything we can get from the community as far as comments, and then, and to prepare yourselves with providing a recommendation to City Council in July. So thinking through what those, what those comments are and how we can, how we can move this, move this along the path. You've seen this slide before. We are, we are right between Phase 3 and 4. We have gone through all of, all of the, the pre-work, the work, the drafting, and we are getting ourselves ready for the, the final draft, and that's what that is. This, tonight is the next step in getting us to the final Preferred Plan, and, and then the development of the final draft, which will then come back to Planning Commission and City Council. This is not a final draft that is to be decided upon. It is the final draft to be, you know, evaluated and, say surgically questioned through the fall as we move towards adoption. So I want to make sure that's, that's very, very clear. I'm going to hand it over to Jesse, who's going to kind of run through some, some topics here and bring us up to speed from where we left off at our last meeting and prep you for the public hearing.
Thanks, Christian. Jesse Hartman with Burke Consulting. So we, at our last meeting, there were some additional questions on the EIS and the difference in the impacts between the alternatives. So we prepared a few slides to go over kind of those at a high level, give you some more context, and then we'll also discuss this kind of possible hybrid alternative that we've been looking at with staff, just to set that discussion up. Like Christian was saying, that is still kind of up for discussion, and it's just, we want to hear more feedback on it. So just some preliminary ideas on that. But basically, the, an EIS or environmental impact statement is required by the State Environmental Policy Act to evaluate potential effects of an action the city's considering. So in this case, adoption of the updated Comprehensive Plan is considered a non-project action under SEPA, meaning the city needs to kind of consider the big picture impacts of the proposed changes. So this EIS analyzes probable impacts of housing and job growth over the next 20 years citywide, as opposed kind of the specific impacts of any individual development. The primary study area is therefore citywide. We also looked at two secondary study areas, downtown and Red Barn, since we are considering updated growth thresholds for the downtown planned action ordinance and adoption of a Red Barn sub-area plan as part of this whole suite of, of updates. The draft EIS studied three alternatives, the No Action Neighborhoods and Centers. We went over those in great detail at our last meeting, so I'm not going to get back into those right now, but we'll just move kind of straight on to the next piece. So we looked at quite a few elements of the environment. We looked at earth, water resources, plants and animals, land use and environmental justice, plans and policies, POP and employment, housing, aesthetics, cultural and historic resources, transportation, public services and utilities. And for each topic area, the analysis starts with a summary of the affected environment or kind of the existing conditions, and then we define thresholds for what's considered a significant adverse impact and analyze impacts under each alternative using these thresholds. Each section also includes mitigation measures to address any identified impacts, and then finally summarizes whether there are any probable, significant, and unavoidable adverse impacts even with the mitigation. So the next, we're just getting into these, but these are the, kind of focusing on the alts 2, the difference between alts 2 and 3. I'm not going to cover everything on these slides for each of the topic areas in detail, so if you have questions along the way, feel free to stop me. But I just, prefacing that there's more information on these slides than I will be reading to you. So, so no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts are expected for earth. Moderate, significant, and unavoidable adverse impacts are expected for water resources and plants and animals. Impacts for all three of these topics are generally cumulative, meaning the combined kind of impact of additional development over time is what results in a significant adverse impact. So, for example, more impervious surface with individual developments could add up to more discharge to waterways, which would cumulatively, cumulatively impact water quality and habitat over time. The impacts are expected to be greater to these under alt 2 than 3 because more dispersed growth means impervious surface area would be increased in a greater distribution and it impact local drainage basins and fragment habitat, habitat patches and corridors across the city as opposed to kind of the more centralized growth of the centers alternative. But in general, your existing regulations are going to mitigate impacts as much as possible. So things like your critical areas regulations, shoreline master program. And then the action alternatives also strengthen your environmental protections or environmental policies to reflect best available science, science and climate resiliency. So for land use and environmental justice and then aesthetics, no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts are expected. Activity levels would increase. Density's height and bulk will also likely increase incrementally across the city as development occurs, although they will occur, the impacts would be gradual. And like we discussed at our last meeting, more and denser residential growth would likely be spread across the residential areas of the city under alt 2, the neighborhoods alternative. Conversely, the kind of expected height and bulk and scale of new development in the centers would increase more under the alt 3 centers alternative. The city's development regulations would continue to mitigate impacts associated with land use patterns, activity levels, development intensities and form. And then your existing tree regulations could ameliorate some of the tree canopy loss that's expected, although new trees would take time to mature. And then redevelopment may also support new opportunities for public open and green spaces. So some of the, just going through some mitigation. Go to the next slide. No significant and unavoidable adverse impacts are expected for plans and policies. Both alts 2 and 3 are consistent with regional plans and the countywide planning policies. Alt 3 is the most aligned with PSRC's regional growth strategy to concentrate housing and job growth near transit and services. It also directs the most growth to Red Barn, which is aligned with Snohomish County's countywide center criteria and the city's desire to designate the Snohomish County portion of the sub-area as a countywide growth center. But then, I know we talked about this in the last meeting too, that while both alternatives provide enough capacity to meet the adopted growth targets in the draft EIS analysis, the early feedback from PSRC and King County has suggested we revise our capacity calculations so that ADUs serve moderate income households instead of kind of the lower, lower income groups, which would mean alt 3 no longer has capacity. So it would, under that new kind of analysis, not be, it would be a significant and unavoidable adverse impact. For POP employment and housing, there's no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts expected for these. Again, with that caveat for alt 3, that it wouldn't have enough capacity at the lower income bands if we revised that capacity calculation. Housing affordability would continue to be a challenge in Bothell due to regional growth pressures, but it would likely improve under both of those alternatives compared to the No Action. And then your existing kind of commitments and, and partnerships would also help mitigate some affordability challenges. All alternatives do include some risk of displacement for residents and businesses with redevelopment. We considered both economic displacement and physical displacement in the housing analysis. So economic displacement is essentially when a household relocates because of financial pressures of rising housing costs. It's more common for renters, but can also be an issue for homeowners with rising property taxes. Direct kind of physical displacement is more like if somebody is evicted, a lease is terminated. Less common, but eminent domain. It can also occur when a, a property owner would choose to renovate units to appeal to a higher income tenants or when buildings are sold for redevelopment. So risk of economic displacement is generally higher than physical displacement just because of the regional housing affordability issues. But alts 2 and 3 would decrease economic displacement risk compared to the No Action because they increase housing supply and diversity overall, making it, improving affordability. For cultural and historic resources, no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts. Specific projects or kind of risk of disturbing undocumented resources could happen with specific projects. But the action alternatives both revise goals and policies to address protection for all types of cultural resources, and then some other mitigation the city could consider are adopting a plan for evaluating potentially important archaeological findings throughout the city or improving additional strategies for ongoing communication with the tribes. Transportation also has no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts under either the alternatives. All alternatives anticipate increased traffic volumes and travel times with additional growth, growth with the most substantial impacts in the southern portion of the city. The alternatives would continue to meet Level of Service E corridor standards with the proposed transportation projects, and then the city could also implement additional TDM measures to further reduce impacts to the network. Overall, VMT and GHG emissions are higher under the action alternatives because there's more growth. So those are also highest under Alternative 2, but they are lower per capita than the No Action alternative. And then all alternatives expect lower VMT, sorry, vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions per capita because there's some improved fuel, future fuel economy assumptions and reduced trip length. So that's also true under the No Action. It's just that the improvements are better under alts 2 and 3. And then more people would live within walking distance of transit under Alternative 3 than 2, but access to transit would increase under all the alternatives in general. And then last thing, sorry, the action alternatives also adopt multimodal level of service policies, which may encourage the non-motorized projects on the project list to be constructed earlier than under the No Action alternative. Last two are public services and utilities, and for both of these, there's no significant and unavoidable adverse impacts expected. All alternatives would increase demand for, kind of combining this in the next slide, sorry, but they would increase demand for kind of public services and utilities because you have more growth. The increased frequency of extreme heat events with climate change may also result in more emergency medical service calls and heat-related illnesses. Impacts in general would continue to be mitigated by existing plans, policies, and regulations. So the city's seven-year capital facilities plan, the PROS Plan update that's planned in 2026. The city also collects fire, park, and school impact fees to help fund system improvements. So as additional improvements are needed, whether they are from a city provided or an external provider, those would kind of continue to be planned for, and impact fees and other measures would, would be adjusted as the growth occurs. One note for this actually, and on utilities, is that focusing more residential growth in the centers under alt 3 could result in slightly more efficient service delivery, especially for emergency service responders, and then also when we get to the utilities, the, just all the utilities in general. So I think there isn't actually anything else on this, just that current infrastructure can generally support existing demand for services and growth in the near term, and specific areas may require upgrades to address capacity limitations for utilities over time, but that again would be worked on with the external providers. Most, most of the utilities are external providers, not all. City of Bothell does provide some of these, but those would be addressed over time in the individual kind of system plans and maintenance. Before, before I jump into this, do you guys have any questions on the EIS? I want, I know that was a lot of information.
Hello, Sarah Gustafson here. There's one item from the EIS that I wanted to highlight, and thank you, Deputy Director Gates, for pointing us to the environmental justice section of the EIS related to a question that Commissioner Jones had last time about which alternative would create greater environmental harm to communities and neighborhoods that are already disadvantaged. And from my reading, it seemed like Alternative 3 might have slightly greater impacts on 195th Street area. And that was the main environmental justice consideration that I saw in the EIS. Is there any other information we should consider regarding the environmental justice question?
I'd need to look at the EIS again, but I believe both, both alternatives are directing a fair amount of growth into that kind of North Creek 195th sub-area. I think it is more under Alternative 3 because it's the, the center, or it's kind of a mixed use center there. The other pieces that come up in general are noise and exposure to poor air quality, and those would, that would continue to be highest in the areas that are abiding kind of I-405 and State Route 522. So not, not just in North Creek, but kind of areas along there. The other thing we looked at is heat and tree canopy, and there are some, the existing heat islands tend to, or areas with, with higher surface temperatures tend to coincide with your centers where there's more development and impervious surface, which makes sense. But there's also some higher levels of heat present in some residential neighborhoods. So that includes Maywood, Beckstrom Hill, Bloomberg Hill, West Hill, and Canyon Creek. And both of the alternatives do focus some additional development there, especially Maywood, Beckstrom Hill, and West Hill. So their additional redevelopment would likely result in some tree canopy loss, which could worsen the heat island effects. The idea is that the mitigation in your tree canopy or your tree regulations would help kind of mitigate those impacts to a less than significant level. And just overall, citywide, as development happens, that's going to continue to be an issue that needs to be looked at, and it's not unique to those neighborhoods alone.
Hi, thank you for this presentation. I'm Commissioner Robson. I have, my questions start on Slide 8 under Land Use and Environmental Justice. There are two bullet points under Likely Impact regarding density, including height and bulk in medium density under alt 2 and 3, and then is greater under alt 2, but the very next bullet point says height and scale in centers increases most under alt 3. I realize there's a little bit of difference in wording, but I'm not sure exactly what that results in, so if you could explain that just a little more, thank you.
Yeah, the, the first bullet there, the intensity of development in residential neighborhoods would increase over time. That's focused mostly on those kind of residential medium and low areas of the city, so outside of the centers essentially. Because your, the, the neighborhood's alternative is directing more growth to those areas and also kind of increasing the allowed density of development, that would increase more than alt 3 where we were scaling that back a little bit. Within the centers themselves, alt 3, so mostly downtown Canyon Park, North Creek, and Red Barn, alt 3 increases the, the maximum allowed height and targeted kind of floor area ratios. So those, the difference is really that you're focused on the residential neighborhoods in the first bullet and the centers in the second one.
Thank you. Can you tell me what an MMLOS is?
Yes, multimodal level of service. So more than just vehicular level of service.
Thank you, yes.
Transit and pedestrian.
I do have more questions, but I'll let another commissioner.
Other Commissioner comment? Commissioner Lever?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and thank you so much for sending us the link to the section 1.6. I, while reading that section, I kind of got a sense that Alternative 3 really took under consideration the mitigating factors that were better for the, the city. And, but I guess, as I think about planning and then the implementation piece, I have sort of a question about the methodology, methodology of the hybrid model, because when it comes to the areas that are more at risk of like erosion or any of the other issues, like how do you, how did you take under consideration like the changes to the densities then? If we're going to do a hybrid, if Alternative 3 was the less likely to have a negative impact, even though both are going to have a negative impact on the environment, when revising the, the model?
And the, so when we get into the final EIS, we would study kind of the specific environmental impacts that would be associated with that. I'm assuming it is a hybrid version at this point, but that is not necessarily the case. You could make a different recommendation. So we would, we would kind of study the very specific impacts of that. The, I think if I can, you're welcome to jump in if you have a different answer, but the hybrid approach for the, can, can you actually repeat your question to me so I make sure?
So when reading the, the impact, Alternative 2, 1, 3, most of the sections, if I recall correctly, really look at Alternative 3 as the better, better one for the environment, most of them, like most of them in general. Like if I just were to make a big statement, N is in alignment with the regional planning. So when we're looking at a hybrid model, how much did the environmental impact, I guess the analysis was taken under consideration to really kind of like remove densities or add densities or all the magic that you worked on? How much did that take, you like incorporate into your hybrid model?
It, I don't know if this is the answer you're looking for or not, but I think it's, because we're going to look at the specific impacts in the final EIS, the hybrid model is more to make sure that we respond to kind of the direction we've generally heard from the public and also from, from you in the previous meeting. It, the impacts are, are moderate in, in, under either Alternative 2 or 3, where there are any kind of unavoidable adverse impacts. It's really the water resources and plants and animals. So the other impacts we identified are generally able to be mitigated by whether it's, it's something that would be adopted with the plan or an existing regulation or some kind of other potential mitigation you could consider. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that necessarily all, like Alternative 2 or 3 was clearly going... There were some benefits to both, and I don't think that either of them were necessarily the kind of clear alternative that would have the least amount of impacts. They're, they, they're, they're better in different ways, each one, so I'm, I don't know if that's really the answer you want, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I wanted to talk, ask if you could... I wanted to talk, ask if you could just readdress this third bullet point on Slide 9, under Likely Impacts. You had mentioned something very quickly about, you had said it so quickly, I didn't catch it. No, it's okay, it's a lot of material. So Alternative 3 is most consistent with Snohomish County's requirement for countywide centers. And then you said they asked you to revise it, and then it wouldn't meet those requirements. Could you just clarify that a little bit?
Yeah. In the draft DIS, both of the conclusions we came to there was that both alternatives had capacity to meet the housing targets at all income levels. We've since met with PSRC and King County, and they've asked us to revise the way we do the capacity calculations, so that ADUs are, would be meeting needs at a moderate income level, because Bothell's a higher-income community, as opposed to we had assumed they might meet the 50% to 80% area median income, which is kind of in that lower income band threshold that, one of the lower income band thresholds that we're looking at. So if you make that revision, Alternative 2 would, as written in the draft DIS, would still have capacity. Alternative 3 would not, specifically in Snohomish County for the lowest income bands. So it is, that is just something to, as written, Alternative 3 in the draft DIS would not have capacity, and so it would not be, it would not be consistent with those kind of regional, with the countywide planning policies essentially. The Snohomish County, the countywide growth centerpiece specifically is kind of a new thing that was introduced in this round of comprehensive plan updates. Both King County and Snohomish County have different requirements for what their countywide growth centers are. It's kind of a level down from the Puget Sound Regional Council's regional growth centers, which is what Canyon Park is. And the city is considering trying to have downtown designated in King County as a countywide growth center, and then the Red Barn portion of Snohomish County, sorry, the Snohomish County portion of Red Barn as a countywide growth center. Snohomish County won't consider the full, because it straddles the, both counties, they won't consider the full neighborhood as part of that, so the...
And Alternative 2 does meet that criteria, or neither of them meet that criteria with the different calculation?
So as written in the countywide planning policies, there's an existing activity unit threshold for the countywide growth centers, which is population and jobs, so it's kind of activity units per acre. As it stands, Red Barn does not meet that existing threshold today, so that doesn't mean the county would not consider it. They've indicated that that might be, like, that's kind of a soft threshold if the future plans show that you are planning for growth and development to occur in that area. Also that you might meet that kind of existing activity unit threshold in a few, I don't know exactly, but in some time when you actually go to have it designated. There is no future activity unit threshold for Snohomish County centers, so there is in King County. This is kind of nuanced and detailed, sorry. But the, so what we looked at is how close does Red Barn come, for future activity units, how close does it come to kind of what King County's threshold is to be kind of potentially considered? The requirement in Snohomish County's countywide planning policies is essentially to direct additional growth. There's some other requirements there, but to encourage additional growth and development and densities that kind of are in line with their overall view for countywide centers. So that's where Alternative 3 anticipates more growth and development in Red Barn, specifically housing, because of the kind of increased height and floor air ratios, and so we'd expect to see more growth there. So it is more in line with that. Neither of them are necessarily inconsistent with that piece, because there is no future activity unit threshold.
Long answer to a short question.
Thorough answer, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. And then on the next slide, under Likely Impacts, this says that most of the housing is expected to be condominium buildings, townhomes, and ADUs. How do you know that?
That is kind of based on the type, the allowed types of development that would be, sorry, it's based on what the revised regulations would allow. So if it allows denser development, there's kind of, there's some, there's a whole bunch of like market factors and things that go into deciding whether or not a property might redevelop in the model. And so it looks at if it could redevelop, what could it redevelop to, and if it is a denser type of development, then that's kind of what is assumed to redevelop there. That's not necessarily what would happen in reality as the city grows. The other piece is that the capacity is generally created in the residential medium and then also in centers, and so it's, in general, we would expect to see more like apartment and condo-type buildings in the centers and in the residential mediums. You're expecting to see more of that kind of middle housing type of development, which would include things like townhomes.
Other Commissioner, clarifying questions? So I've got one. You indicated that Alternative 3 does not meet affordable housing, Alternative 2 does. How does the hybrid fall out?
We are tweaking the, we can, do you want to go to the hybrid, and we can discuss that? Or it, the intent is that the hybrid will meet capacity requirements, and so we're still tweaking some of the assumptions in it to get, to make sure that happens. So we would like to leave you with a hybrid preferred alternative that you put forward that does have capacity. That's kind of one of the key driving pieces.
All right, thank you. Other Commissioners? All right, seeing no other clarifying questions from the Commission, our next step is public comments. We'd invite those who wish to make a comment to come up to the podium. You'll have three minutes. We have a system here.
Quick, quick, before you chair. Oops. We did want to, we had paused on the EIS. We did want to run through the potential.
Sorry, thought we got through our clarifying. Go right ahead.
So we have looked at a hybrid alternative based on the feedback that we've received thus far. It's essentially a kind of, it's the primary capacity and density policies from Alternative 2, with some aspects of Alternative 3 built in. The, I'm going to kind of go at these bullets in out of order, sorry, but there's two fee simple manufactured home developments that were shown as residential manufactured home park. They are fee simple, so people own the lots underneath as well. And in the draft DIS, they were shown as that manufactured home park. We've adjusted that to be residential low, so it's consistent with how, so all fee simple manufactured home parks are treated the same in the city. So that's kind of one kind of housekeeping piece, but compared to Alternative 2, this hybrid alternative would increase the average minimum lot size and adjust the maximum units per lot slightly in the residential medium areas, to reduce density slightly there, based on the feedback we heard, and then it would, that would decrease capacity slightly in those areas. So to count for this revised capacity amount, we've redesignated all areas currently zoned R-7200 to residential medium to help meet the growth targets, especially in Snohomish County. A lot of those were already designated as residential medium in the draft DIS alternative, so it's not, it's kind of bringing all of the areas that currently have that zoning to the same, treating them the same. And then it would also increase, the piece from Alternative 3 is that it would increase the target floor air ratio and possibly height limits within the mixed-use neighborhood and community designations. And then this, we kind of comparing this potential hybrid land use map to the draft EIS alternatives, you can see several new residential medium areas in the city, includes areas around Fourth Avenue West in Snohomish County, so up in the northwest portion of the city there, as well as some additional lands near Red Barn and the Brickyard Park and Ride. So those revisions would help increase capacity to offset the reduced capacity from the changes to minimum lot size and units per lot. They're also consistent with kind of the purpose of the residential medium designation, as these areas generally are near existing or future amenities, including transit, mixed-use or commercial areas, and schools. And then you'll also see the kind of revisions for Cascade Vista and Woodcrest Estates, the two manufactured fee simple manufactured home parks. And then finally, this is just, there was a version of this map at the last meeting, the areas of change. It's just revising that to show the kind of expanded areas of change, which are those residential low to residential medium where the, that I just talked about. And that is all we have on the hybrid alternative for now. More, we want to hear kind of what comes out of this meeting and what the public has to say, and before we make the kind of final tweaks and come back to you next week. That's all now, yeah.
That's all, all right, thank you. So any Commissioner questions regarding what we heard on the hybrid? I think, yes, Commissioner Lever.
Commissioner Sills. I'm sorry if I missed it. How does this compare as far as getting to those growth targets like we were talking about under the new criteria?
Yeah, that's part of what we're still tweaking, and we didn't want to finalize until after this meeting, to come to you with the kind of final pieces of that next week. The intent is that it will meet capacity, and so you will have capacity to meet those growth targets, and that's what we're still tweaking to get those kind of, what specific average minimum lot sizes and units per lot would you need in the residential medium areas with these changes to still have capacity?
This is more of a, maybe like an ask that may or may not be admissible, but I think that there's a lot of great information and maps. I'm such a visual person, and one of the things that I'm having a hard time in terms of like really looking at the changes and sort of like the impact that we are clearly concerned with, is almost kind of like overlapping, like the maps. I'm just thinking of, you know, interactive maps where, you know, when we think about, okay, the impact that was going to have for the immigrant community, or like the diversity that we have on the north of the city, as we kind of change models, like it would be really great to see the impact on the different things that we have discussed, and, or also even having like a matrix that can really tell, like really tell us like, okay, well, this is what would happen with the 2, the 3, and then the hybrid, knowing that there's always something that we have to almost kind of like give up per se. But it's really hard to, there's just so much information, I just think about like even for the public to be able to like follow it. So I don't know if for the final recommendation, there could be a version of like interactive maps, where we could easily see how we try to mitigate the impact of the different indicators that were looked at very carefully. Otherwise, it's really complex, right, to really wrap my head around it, knowing that a plan is just going to allow us to do, and implementation is where we really need to be careful. But what I'm concerned about not having that visual assistance is that at the end of the day, if we just permit something, hoping that implementation will address the mitigation, then we might just lose something that's really key for the approval process. So I don't know if it's doable. You have just great maps, and there's just so much information, and I just wish we could just be clicking and hit maps and just looking at the layers.
Yeah, we, before next week's meeting, cannot put together an interactive map, just given, given how many days are between now and then, and when you would need that information available to look at. I think what we probably could do is do like a map, I think we could combine all of the maps that are in the draft DIS into like a packet, if that's easy. I know sometimes I just toggle between, you know, like pages in a PDF. That might be the simplest way to get you all of the maps in one place.
And I think even like, like I mentioned last time, I'm kind of really interested in like the long term, how do we really make this a process that's kind of pretty much alive? So even if we can get it like next week, because this is something that we will continue to be revising, how do we really leverage technology so that we can have user-friendly tools that the public and even us can really like interact with as we continue to discuss the comprehensive plan? So no rush, no need to do anything or create anything, just something that I think will be super helpful for all of us.
I want to thank you for work on the hybrid alternative. I think you heard what we said last meeting, and appreciate the amount of work that must have gone in to have something for us this evening, so thanks for that. So seeing no further clarifying questions from the Commission, we'll move on to public comments. We will follow the same rules for public comment as the comment section with the lights, so watch the lights if you're making a comment. And Commissioners may ask clarifying questions. We won't get into extended discussion, but if an individual makes a comment that a Commissioner feels they could better understand by clarifying it, you may get a question on that, so just be prepared there. So do we have people who wish to comment? Looking over, was there a sign-up sheet? So we'll start with the sign-up sheet first, and then after we go through the sheet, if there are additional individuals who wish to speak, we'll certainly invite you up to No, no, you can just call them as, unless you want me to call them, we can go either way. Okay, that's fine. It's been a while since we've been up on the podium. All right, the first person who indicated a request to comment is Nancy Sakman. Nancy, please come up, introduce yourself, and I see you have an affiliation, why don't you tell us what that is as well? Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Nancy Sakman. I'm of the Sakman family of the Duamish tribe and a direct descendant of Chief Seattle and his daughter Kiki Sobloo, also known as Princess Angeline. I'm the tribe's cultural preservation officer and a trained geologist. I'm a resident of Tadab Plouk, also known as Wanida, and a frequent traveler through La Vadis, the ancient village of Bothell. We would like to echo some of our written sentiments regarding the comprehensive plan. Bothell, the city and its surrounding environs, is an area that the Duamish tribe, the Snoqualmy, and the Snohomish tribes consider culturally significant and is one of our usual and accustomed places that we have inhabited since time immemorial through now. There are at least eight historical and ancestral place names within about a mile of Bothell and its city limits. The Duamish tribe supports Bothell's comprehensive plan and commends the city for including the discussion of climate change and recognizing its effects on our environment for all living beings. We also commend the city for including ancestral history, European contact, and post-contact history, and focusing on equity and inclusion in your plan. Recognizing the many voices that have contributed to Bothell is a positive way for the city to invite economic growth, a welcoming destination place for visitors, to be a leader among the surrounding cities of Lake Washington, and to uplift its citizens by fostering a sense of community. The Duamish tribe wishes the city of Bothell success in adopting the imagined Bothell comprehensive plan. We hope it can be a vibrant place for citizens, visitors, and its ancestral people. We hope that the tribe can be a community partner with the city. We would also like to extend to you an invitation to meet with the tribe at our longhouse in West Seattle, to discuss the comprehensive plan, or to discuss any other topics related to Bothell at any time. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Thank you for participating, and we look forward to your continued input through this process. The next person who checked the box to comment, Mr. Timothy Jackson?
Thank you, Commissioner, and all the work that's going on. I just wanted to make an introduction, Timothy Jackson from PMF Capital Management. We've been in Bothell for a long time, go a long way back with David Boyd, and even the first kind of downtown Bothell comprehensive plan that was done, I think 15 years ago? Something, it's about, yeah, it's been a while. Effectively, I mean, the communication that you're having tonight is going on all over East King County right now in various cities. We just... We just got done with a really big lift in the city of Bellevue that took about seven years. So we applaud everything you're going through. We know there's some really tough challenges and some tough topics that you're discussing tonight. My only purpose in commenting today is really just to bring attention to staff. I had a great meeting today with a she who's your economic director, who made himself readily available to us on an incredibly quick basis. Really appreciate that. To kind of discuss one property in particular that we hold, although we hold several within the downtown core and the common areas, one is North Creek Plaza Shopping Center. And we need to talk with staff, but we'd like to go over some particular idiosyncrasies with that property, including kind of the high voltage power lines and some regional sewer stuff that go through there that make that property particularly very challenging. If you did go back in our history, starting in Bellevue in the late 70s, kind of moving our headquarters there in the 80s, we've had all kinds of awards for mixed use and sustainability and things of that nature. We're a very active company in the community with Boys and Girls Club and Fred Hud Cancer and Children's Cancer Research. We love this community. I actually raised my family in Bothell, know all the trails, know all the parks. We love mixed use and in most cases, that's our preferred angle and maybe there that would work as well. But we would just love time to kind of go over some things with staff that we're facing there that are probably not necessarily super public knowledge and see if staff can help us think through what would be the community preferred outcome down the road for that property. The only other thing I'd like to comment on is downtown. One thing, Market Building, which I'm sure you're all aware of on Main Street is one of ours. We've been working on a tenant for a very long time. That has like a transition zoning to it that's been somewhat perplexing to some of our architects. And just noticing in the plan that you're going from kind of seven stories in the core, which by the way, is hugely helpful, especially for like rooftop amenity space and things like that. But then if you drop down to five, it kind of creates, like how do you, how does the city want that to step down? I guess we'd have a question about that. But nonetheless, those are, you know, those are simpler things. For the most part, we're really excited that you're undertaking this and just again, want to thank you all tonight for all the work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment and pleased to hear that you've had productive conversations with staff and expect that will continue, so thank you. All right, those are the two individuals who indicated on the sign in sheet they wish to speak. Now I'd invite anyone else who wished to speak to step up this podium, introduce yourself and you'll have your three minutes. So Ms. Agard?
Annie Agard, and on Norway Hill. I'm addressing the hearing tonight. First thing I noticed that the recommended Exhibit A, which is noted in your possible recommendation, isn't in the packet. I have no idea what it's talking about and the public has no way of accessing what Exhibit A is. Secondly, there's additional information and I'm going to talk primarily about this hybrid to the neighborhood alternative as outlined in page 10 of the Planning Commission. What is the fact, and I think you've asked this also, of and numbers of units of housing of shifting the fee simple manufactured home developments, Holly Hills, Cascade Vista and Woodcrest to the residential medium? Adjusting the residential low 7,200 to residential medium throughout the city. What is the effect in numbers of units and housing of shifting this zoning? Please clarify numbers and areas on the colored flume map. And I would mention right now, the map that was shown on the screen is nowhere to be found that I could find in any of the information, but it would be very helpful to make that available to the public. Three, increasing the FAR slightly by point five within the mixed use neighborhood and mixed use center. What is the impact on the height limits of the, in these districts? Most of us don't really understand totally the FAR, so we need more explanation. What is the FAR proposed currently for mixed use neighborhood centers? And these are numbers, there are numbers of these neighborhood centers designated on the flume map. And how many are there and what are their effect on the units? Again, there was this map that was thrown up on the screen, but nobody could look at it or see it before the hearing. Does the increase in the FAR also include mixed use community centers as well as countywide centers? And how many centers and what is the effect on the units? What is the effect on the zero to 80% AMI range gap identified in the PSRC in King County on the redistribution of the city's larger portion of the ADUs? I'm pleased to see that the, that this draft for the Planning Commission recognizes that the required current housing capacity exceeds the combined countywide growth target, but the deficiency for multifamily housing types to meet the median income AMI would not be implemented by increasing the densities in 7,200, et cetera. But I suggest that you look at alternatives such as converting the existing empty office spaces and light industrial sites to accommodate the median income housing. Thank you. Do you have any clarified questions?
I'll look to the commissioners. Any clarifying questions from Ms. Agard? I see none. Thank you for giving us a written copy of your comments so we could follow along. It made it much easier for us to digest what you had to say, so thank you for that. Any other members of the public wish to comment? Okay, I'll, I'll give you a moment.
Yeah, Teresa and I, so two separate comments.
Okay.
Thank you.
So you would have three minutes for each individual.
Hi, and before I start in my three minutes, I just want to mention that some of the comments about providing more interactive and more clear pictures about traffic and overlapping maps, I have provided in March and several previous times that I have attended and open houses to the consultants, so just, they were not very clear. Thank you and thank you so much for reiterating that and trying to use that.
Okay, so please introduce yourself and then proceed with your three minutes. Thank you.
My three minutes now. My name is Laura Escudé, a longtime resident of Ciro, Bothell, and I live in West Hill and I'm really concerned about many of the points and some of the models provided by the comprehensive plan, especially, it seems like the people that are designing this doesn't leave in a 98011, 98012 zip code. So I have a lot of concerns. I'm even a longtime resident in, in the city. And the implications, you're talking about environmental justice. I live in the top of the West Hill, in one of the areas that half of the West Hill area is, right now is low and now it's going to be turned to middle, kind of in the middle there. So I respect that you have provided many comments that instead of to get to the Bothell High School area, we just follow the natural line, so maybe we still keep up. And the consequences are very real because I don't know if you have received this, the card for taxation. My property went down 10% because my, my building property went down. So this is really, you can make a copy. So basically, right now, so for curiosity, I have called them up and they told me, well, basically, your area is ready for development. I want to put six apartment complexes there with a new change. So, so right now, if I want to improve the house or produce anything else, I just don't have the backup in the bank because my property went down. So there are real implications, not only for myself, but for many people in the area that have longtime residents. So I'm very concerned about traffic, about losing the canopy. One of the suggestions, I would say that maybe if I can put it in the model, just leave the natural areas of Bothell as they are. Traffic, traffic, all our pedestrian type of neighborhood there and also is very heavily into renting instead of to private ownership. So most of the codes are going through developers and there, if private people want to develop or improve their houses with ADU, the costs of the improvement go higher. So thank you so much for your time and I'm looking forward to any clarified questions and, and then also, I'm really concerned about the tire dust for the increase of, and of in previous areas, so more development. And so we all know that it's directly related to if we're going to have more than the 78 resident wells or gas in the PSS. Thank you so much for your time and I'm asking for clarifying times.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any clarifying questions?
I have a question about the interactive maps. Can you tell me more about what you share with the city?
Yeah, so one, one of the many things that happened is when we went to the open houses, they show us maps that they, I couldn't find it in the area, so I, I was able to take pictures, so I have it here. And you can see before and after. So I was able to compare because I'm very curious and that's what I noticed on some areas, they were all yellow. Now with the new hybrid component, they are turning to a different color, so the densities are higher. So most of the folks, if they don't notice because they're a little colorblind, they don't, you know, we're all getting old. And then also, one of the things that happened right now is that for many people there, right now, Ciro, Bothell, especially this area, is heavily rental, so the property ownership is kind of come down. So anyway, so, and there are all new folks coming in. Anyway, so, so that's what I mean by interactive map. So one of the other things too that I mentioned is that they need to provide some sort of better traffic analysis, traffic counts, more where people can know what are the implications. Yeah, in, in 20 years, you put 100 more houses in one block that they were 10, what are the implications in the long term for reduced tree for that area? So we were talking about speed, you know, providing sidewalks. So for instance, if you're going to put 100 houses in, in two or three blocks that were, before they were 10, so you need to have related mitigations such as you keep sidewalks, diminish, keep, keep the greens there. So and one thing that I want to kind of mention about the growth and develop, I just wanted to, when you exit, you can see in one of the rooms there, there is an old picture from the 1900s when they clear cut all the area. So I just want to picture what is going on right now in the West Hill area. We had two big developments coming in, cutting our trees, diminish the canopy that when you were coming from Seattle, you used to have that. So it will be very important for people to know is, well, we are putting more growth here, this is the canopy that we have, so this is going to be the canopy in 20 years. So people will make the decision, they are able to say, what are the real impacts? Okay, so I'm going to, so we're going to make a growth, but for instance, if the mitigations, so we're going to put mitigations, we're going to replace the ten fir trees or whatever native, so for people more interactive can see that. I'm sorry if I went too far.
All right, thank you.
And especially right now with all the interactive thing, you know, you have Zoom, all those things, everybody playing the computer, you know, so just kind of, thank you. And I want to talk for Maria Teresa. So Maria Teresa Escudé, also resident in Bothell, she's 27 year old. The other thing that we have a lot of concerns that some of the folks mentioned in the hybrid, that a lot of the, of the growth that is going to happen in the Ciro, Bothell and, and the model is they're all ADU or townhomes. So as well, no, no have stairs, very reduced. If you go right now there, I ran an experiment to go to all the new houses in Bothell, brand new, her wheelchair, my wheelchair, I forgot about you, my wheelchair, it will not fit in any of the houses, even the $2.8 million there. So definitely, I am proponing that the city, if they're going to decide with the progress, we're not getting any older, we live in the area that we have University of Washington Hospital, we have Evergreen, we have Providence, this is, you know, this is where we work all our years. So, so also somehow in the comprehensive plan, if that's the move of the growth, be sure that those residents are accessible, so we can keep the services and it will be part of the environmental justice. Anybody has any clarification questions? You have anything else to say? No? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you so much. And I can provide a copy of the, the card about how, you know, changing the code from low density to middle density, how it impacted value of the property.
If you would like that to be part of the public record, you should provide a copy and then it will be incorporated. Thank you. Okay, yeah, however you want to redact it, so remove the personal information, that would be fine. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? All right, going to look to staff. Have we received any comments that will result in revisions which should keep the public comment period open? Or should we close the hearing and move on to discussion?
I don't believe we've, we've received any comments.
Okay.
That would.
If that is the case, then I'll ask if there is any objection amongst the commissioners to closing the public hearing at this point. And the next thing would be our deliberations. This is our first run through on the new bylaws, so I'm looking closely to make sure we're following them. All right, well, with that, the public comment portion of the hearing is closed and we'll move on to commission deliberations. This is the time for us to discuss what we've heard, particularly focusing on the findings and conclusions, because that is what we're going to move forward to the council with. And I've been asked to speak with the council about our recommendations, so I want to be sure that these, those findings recommend, represent the feelings of the commission. Scrolling down to it myself. So commissioners, discussion? Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I just wanted to address some of these questions that, forgive me, I'm going to mispronounce this name, Agard? This very helpful handout that Ms. Agard gave us regarding, we don't have a full handout on what the hybrid impact is going to be, so we can kind of gauge that. And she, you know, she is, a lot of the issues you covered about Alternative A and Alternative B, she very rightly points out that we don't necessarily have for the hybrid approach. And so I was wondering if you could speak to that. And, you know, I realize that you very likely haven't, maybe haven't done that analysis, but if it's just somewhere in the middle for everything, that, that might even be okay too, but just, you know, how, how the, for example, hybrid plan might affect the environment versus Alternative 1 or Alternative 3, maybe it's somewhere in the middle, but maybe there's something that we're overlooking that in fact does stand out by the, the hybrid approach that you could, that you know that we don't know.
All right, I assume you're talking to me when you're, yeah, okay, just making sure. Yeah. I, I can't answer it fully because that's what the final EIS will do, is look at those impacts in detail. The idea is that this hybrid alternative falls somewhere in the range of what you've looked at in Alternative 2 and 3, and so the impacts would likely fall somewhere in that range as well. It is closer to Alternative 2 in design, so that doesn't mean impacts, I'm not saying all impacts will be what Alternative 2 is, but they are likely to be closer to that. Some of the kind of more specific unit impacts and capacity impacts that you were asking about, those will be covered in the final EIS. They should be identified in there like they were in the draft for the Alternative 2 and 3. So that, that detail is to come, but I, I can't answer it fully right now.
I have a question around the housing piece. Can you point me to the place where I, I read participated in, in terms of like the stakeholder meetings, where housing authorities like the Snohomish Housing Authority or the King County Housing Authority, whether or not there was engagement with those agencies in terms of really thinking of how we're going to be able to coordinate and provide the housing for the very low and extremely low income levels? Because it is my understanding that for both alternatives, and I'm expecting that the third alternative as well, that deficit for the very low and extremely low income levels will continue. So in terms of what would be like the best scenario to collaborate with those agencies, I wonder if the housing authorities have. I wonder if the housing authorities have participated or have said anything, especially with funding for affordable housing from Amazon and all the other different investments that are kind of done, so that we can expect some mitigation that may be outside our control, but very much happening?
So I don't believe there was anybody from either of the county housing authorities in the work group. I know the city participates in some housing, I cannot remember what it's called, I'm sorry, but you, I know they participate in kind of a, with the housing authority to help look at the, the kind of affordability issues on a regional scale. And Jason.
Sure. Thank you, Jesse. We are active participants in Regional Coalition for Affordable, for Housing, Arch, and we have continued dialogue with them and are represented on their executive board. And Jesse, sorry, we did not have direct interaction with the King County Housing Authority. We did just find out that based on our population threshold, we just crossed the 50,000 mark, which will likely make us a community development block grant entitlement community. And we have opportunities to engage with regional consortiums at the county, at both county levels. So we know that to hit that target for those, the lower brackets, partnerships in some cities are going to be necessary. And so those kind of dialogues are going to have to happen over the next five to 10 years. And I know that we have a five-year look back period, so we're going to have to foster and strengthen those partnerships within the first five years to make sure that we're on track for implementing that housing target strategy. But to answer your question, that those conversations haven't happened through the context of the comp plan, but we do have other platforms where we do engage with them.
Other commissioner comments, questions? Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Sills. One thing I noticed from the current land use map and the alternatives, alternatives two and three, was it seemed like there was a lot more open space and public park area in the urban growth area than, that was then designated into a zoning. So I'm just curious, like, does that mean that we would be developing on existing open space or parks? Because I just don't, I think that as we increase density, we actually need more parks and more public spaces. And so I'd really hate to see development happen on existing public area or public park where there's, you know, it's accessible for everyone. So I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong maps, or like we said, it's very hard to follow the colors sometimes, but I just, I think it's critically important that we try to drive that number up of how many people live within 10 minute, a 10-minute walk of a public park. Like, I think that's critical as we grow, along with allowing for more housing. So I just wanted to register that with both of those alternatives.
So the, the future land use map does include a kind of public open and open space designation.
Mm-hmm.
So that is open, like, open space and parks that are your current parks essentially, and large areas that are already identified by the city. All of your existing regu, if, if areas are undeveloped because they are encumbered by critical areas or they're very hard to develop, all of those existing regulations are going to continue to apply. So the likelihood that they would develop now under their current zoning is probably the same as what it would be in this, the future land use, whatever scenario you pick. The, the parks plan is going to look in more detail at kind of the identifying where you would like your future parks to be. I know in the current plan, there are some identified gap areas and access, especially in the Snohomish County where people can't, they aren't within walking distance of parks. So that, that is part of, of the E I S analysis and looking at that. But we anticipate that the parks plan is going to address it in more detail than the comp plan will, because it's focused on the park system.
Ask a follow-up to that. So alternative two and alternative three, does one of them make that easier or more accessible, or is it, does it pretty much net out the same? And it's just depends on once we have that plan?
Does it make developing more parks easier under, are there alternatives?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking? There, it's, they're treating it essentially the same because they're, they're not, neither of the alternatives are designating different areas for parks. We're not getting into that granular detail now, it's really the existing ones that are on there. So there, there isn't really a difference in terms of what the two alternatives and one of them making it easier to develop more parks. I, I think, I think the detail you're looking for is probably going to be in the pros plan update more than, than the comp plan.
Okay. But they won't compete with one another? Like, this won't get in the way of their plan?
No, this should support, this should support what's in, what goes into the parks plan update. We have been working with the parks department to kind of try to align where they think they're going with that. Obviously, that process is, hasn't really started yet, so kind of more of some of their long-term goals. And then pieces of the comp plan can be revised to reflect the updates that happened for the pros plan. So if there's something identified in the pros plan that the comp plan is in conflict with, the city would reconcile those.
One second. But, but to clarify, I thought I heard Commissioner Sills asking whether either of the alternatives was looking at developing current parkland or public open space? And I didn't think it was. So can we say no to that?
No, no, it is not. It is, it is adding a, a future land use designation to clearly identify the existing parks and open space that the city has as part of their network, so that those are not developed as something else.
So land which is currently in public ownership designated as open space or parks would remain such under any of the alternatives?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to be real clear on the record with that. Yes, Commissioner Lever.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback, similar to the housing question, when I was reading the draft E I S, I did see that there was sort of like a deficit on neighborhood parks in general. And also, there's going to be an increased demand around like schools, and I believe we are already at capacity with many of that. Can you just briefly talked about maybe like the other things that are happening, which you sort of touched on it, because the park situation, and apparently more acute in Snohomish County? What, what is kind of happening tangentially that we just need to be aware of, as we are developing and want to make sure that we have that open space for recreation, which I believe is happening, right?
Yeah, Jason, I may have you speak to kind of like what, what the city is, is working towards with parks especially, but for like schools, for instance, the, the schools do their own capital facilities plans, and they typically look at out six years in a lot of detail and then kind of out further in less detail. But they look at, they have student generation rates based on the development that it's, that's expected. We used that in the comp, the comp plan analysis in the E I S to look at what the potential impacts of growth would be for the various schools and with the school district, mostly North Shore, because that's what serves the city limits. So that is part of, that, that would continue, that process would continue. I think they do their, their capital facilities plans every two years, and so they get revised if they look at where their capacity concerns are. I know they have, I mean, they have projects in there to try and address some of their immediate needs. They will continue to add and adjust projects as they see needs. But that is, that's, so that's in there for schools. It's also for, I know Balthol has the fire department, but they also coordinate with Snohomish County Fire District 10, so all of that kind of like detail analysis, looking at what your, your service standards and all of that is in, in the capital facility, the public services piece of the E I S, and then part of the capital facilities plan that's with the comp plan.
And we referred to the pros plan before. Again, the update for the pros plan would be subsequent to this comp plan, but I will tell you that right now, the implementation of the 2020 pros plan is very much underway in terms of looking at existing parkland, the facilities that are needed, and making those capital improvements, and maybe even building out part of our recreation program, and making that a little bit more robust. So I think it becomes sort of an iterative process in that the pros plan isn't on the exact same timeline as the comp plan. So we're now in the implementation phase of that. After the comp plan is adopted, the pros plan will be updated and then that will be implemented. So right now, we're again in that implementation phase, and those needs are assessed on a fairly frequent basis on, through the pros plan.
So for the, for the recommendation to city council, would it be possible to sort of highlight the alternate or the, the recommended scenario? If we can just say whether or not it's going to have that positive or negative impact or neutral? Because if I recall correctly, for the school situation, I think the alternative three expected more, more students coming into Balthol. So if the new alternative is slightly different, just kind of like to get a sense of whether or not we are expected to have more demand or less demand? Like, the parks will be the same, clearly, because the way that I understood it, but that might be helpful, just to really have a recommendation that outlines those categories by alternative?
Yeah, the, the alternatives will, they, they do differ, and the hybrid alternative differs in its capacity, but the overall growth numbers that we're, we're studying are the same under, under the alternative. So there's no, there's no, there shouldn't be a difference in the overall number of students we would expect to see, for example, under the hybrid alternative versus alternative two or three, because you're looking at the same number of growth. So just because you're creating more capacity necessarily, doesn't necessarily mean that the, the growth would be different. We're still planning to those targets that are part of the countywide planning policies.
But to your point, Commissioner Lever, in the findings, conclusions and recommendations, we can, as a commission, specifically put in things we want to highlight for the council. So I'm thinking we probably won't conclude tonight if we want to add things, but if you have something you want to get in there, you think's important, you can send it to staff before the next meeting, next Wednesday, and then we would discuss it and vote on it and, and put that specifically before the council. That's, that's the vehicle for getting that in there.
And Chair, if I may?
Yes.
The intent, the intent for tonight was to, to give you a sort of an outline?
Yes.
Look of what the, the findings, conclusions and recommendations could be, and, and give you that, that skeleton to build off of through thoughts and through comments and deliberation tonight. And staff can bring back that, and it's close to a, a final form that next week could be modified into, into the final form that, that would be presented to city council the following week.
Okay, yes, thank you. And if, to kind of leverage that, once we conclude this discussion here, I'd like you to bring up the findings, conclusions and recommendations, and then we can go through them and look at them and make comments from here, and then you can take those comments and we'll look at them later. So it's kind of where I would see this going. If there are other thoughts, welcome them from other commissioners. So other discussion? Commissioner Westerbeck?
Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. This is Commissioner Westerbeck. First, I wanted to say, appreciate the, the hybrid. Like Chair Kiran said, you heard us, it's great. Because I, I've been really torn between alternative two and three. There's a lot to like about alternative two, which I spoke to at the last meeting, more opportunities for homeownership, spreading the, the growth throughout the city, which is more equitable, depending on where a person wants to be. There's some other reasons, I won't go into all of them, but, so it's great. And I really like that, at the same time, we're going to see, and we want to see existing commercial areas be built up, we've built those for growth, they can usually handle a lot more. So it's very smart for us to continue to thicken those areas up, it's where we already go for commerce and stuff like that. And I can't help think like, in, in time, we might eventually be returning to some of those, those R M areas, they're going to get thickened up. We've got new-ish, a lot of those neighborhoods are newer, so it's got some newer infrastructure it can handle, as we've talked about with Boyd Benson and others. It can, it can handle a certain amount of increase in utility capacity, so it's a great place to add, thicken up, and we don't have to do new, new pipes and wires and streets and stuff, so I like that. And we're also probably going to see, you know, corner stores and stuff, but come back slowly, we might see some extra commercial nodes. So I think this, this hybrid is really onto something that can help sustain us in the future and utilize and capitalize existing infrastructure and, and investments we've already made, instead of trying to shove it all in one spot or spread it out and, and, you know, encourage more green, greenfield development. So anyway, thank you for that, I love that. And so utilizing our utilities to maximum. I wanted to touch a little bit on what Ms. Escudé said about accessibility. I hear from, from residents all the time about, you know, it's sort of this unspoken thing that, and so I'm in the built, you know, the built environment business as an architect and small developer, and a lot of people are like, you know, single family home and townhouses and stuff, you can't be disabled. You can't have, you know, even a cane or something, it's going to be really hard to live there. So there's a synergy with land use code and building code, and we never really talk about building code, because this is comp plan and it's land use. And they're two different things. You've got a building code that tells you what, what you can build and how to, how to keep it safe, and that's our building official. And then we've got land use code, which we deal with mostly here in comp plan. But land use code dictates what kind of buildings can get built. And so the middle housing, H B 1110, was really important. There's a really challenging element to the, what we build in the United States around accessibility, because, for example, condos, stacked flats, apartments, they need elevators and stairs and things like that, and they're going to be condos. Well, we have a condo law right now that's really difficult to developers, architects, builders, because you automatically get sued with the current law, 10 units or more. There's a cottage industry for this, if there's a defect. And, you know, people should get nice quality buildings that are, that are well-built and waterproof. But part of our densification, our land use and our, our comp plan is going to lead us to starting to have to study how we get quality density for people like Teresa, who can't live in a townhouse or a lot of single-family houses, because they, they don't have to be accessible. You don't have to go access, make anything accessible till it's three units, excuse me, four units or more by fair housing standards. So anyway, our comp plan and our land use code can really begin to sort of lay out and synergize with their billing code. So for example, we've got a single stair, in addition to the condo laws, which we may have to look at as a country soon, just as we thicken up as a country, all the states have these condo laws. We're also going to have to look at, we, the legislature passed a single stair law a couple years, about a year ago, that's, the state is working on how we can have more buildings with a single stair, sprinkled, of course, for safety, and they might have an elevator. So people, again, like Teresa could live in those, and they'll fit into neighborhoods and small buildings of four, five, six units or something like that. So the way we lay out how our neighborhoods are going to grow really is going to affect also what we can build in those. So I just hope we continue to have a conversation with our billing official and, and then our state representatives and people who make codes, so we can build the stuff to accommodate every single person, because we're moving towards, this is awesome, we're moving towards a city that sees people with, with disabilities and maybe who can't live in every kind of building. And we're seeing different communities and cultures and stuff that, that need different housing types. And so now we have to kind of rip out the Band-Aid and say, what do they need to, to live successfully in Balthol? And those are just some of the more, you know, literally physical components we have to think about that are affected by our land use code. So I'm really glad you brought it up, I appreciate it. And I know them from the past, so, and I know others who, who have similar issues with where they live. So anyway, I wanted to bring that up, it's not something you usually talk about in the comp plan. I think that's all I've got at the moment, but, yeah, that was it. I appreciate that. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Other commissioner, comments? Yes, Commissioner Robson?
Thank you. I just wanted to see, is this a time to make formatting notes? Is that appropriate? Are we, are we talking more just upper level policy and that sort of thing?
Well, we are in council, commission deliberations, so we can.
Free for all.
Yeah, pretty much.
[laughing]
Pretty much.
Okay.
I I do want to go through specifically the findings, conclusions and recommendations at one point. So if it's regarding that, we're going to bring that up. If it's something else.
Regarding formatting, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go right ahead.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say that as we when we do put this into our final versions, I think things that we really need to hit on, in addition to some good old charts and tables and all those wonderful things that as we gather more and more information with the plans are critical to have included in the document. I think that we need to talk about with specifically highlight how this plan will affect traffic and the environment, maybe even pull out portions because those are when we create the final document, those are so important. We hear that over and over and over again from people who come in or people we talk to on the streets. And so when we are coming up with the final document or you guys are coming up with the final document to bring to us, I think those will be those will be critical for and very important for residents to understand what we're looking at come implementation. That's it.
Can I just ask a question? Do you mean the final formatting of the comp plan? Okay, just confirming. Thank you.
Other commissioners? All right. So could you bring up the findings, conclusions and recommendations? And two of the things that I've heard recurring from commissioners and from the public are interest in parks and open space and affordable housing. So I'd like to be sure that that's reflected and if folks have a comment you want to put in here, that'd be great.
Pages this in the table.
Actually, it's up there right now. So it's up on the screen right now. It's page forty something, but off the screen. So the first finding is pretty boilerplate, the history of the process. I don't know that we would have any comments there. So please feel free to interrupt me if you'd like. So moving on to the second, it's geographic location. We are where we are. So this is a proposed action, adopting the plan. I don't know that we have anything to that. The meetings, again, are what they are with the public notice. So here in six, we get some specific findings. So I do look to commissioners if you want to insert something here, make the following specific findings, experiencing growth. So seven talks about experiencing growth, promoting affordable housing. Not seeing anything on open space there, if you think that's a place to put it or a standalone. And again, this is a really important document, so we want to be sure that reflects our thoughts as a group. Pause for a moment. And again, we'll run at the bite at this.
Could you clarify your question? I think you said six, but when I look at A, AG, it has parks, recreations and open space or?
I was just scrolling down the specific findings and I'm looking at number seven, where it talks about an urgent need to allow housing, infrastructure and affordable options.
Okay. And I think and I think I just kind of went further down. And then I was looking at number eight because looking at all the things that were taken under consideration, including parks, recreation and open space.
Yes.
But what I'm here, am I am I hearing you ask, do we need to modify bullet seven to specifically call out parks, recreation and open space?
Well, we could either modify seven or add a new number. Because number eight really just kind of is a list of what's in the plan. I don't think we would modify that. But if commissioners feel like it's important to have a standalone comment on parks and open space, we could add an item. And I'm looking around the table.
I would I would be in favor of that. I think I don't I I think it might it could be incorporated as seven because I do think it's sort of like in line with more housing options. We want to provide that, but I'm not married to that. And I would just say like, if there's a way to say promote middle housing and not just affordable, just to kind of, you know, because I think housing is a continuum, right? So if we're only looking at affordable, that means a very specific thing, but we want to add more housing stock. We want to add supply. So I think I I would just throw in a recommendation there, too.
So would you want to say something to the effect to provide to promote a range of housing alternatives, including middle and affordable? Because again, it's a continuum.
Yeah, I like that, if others agree.
Completely agree.
So something to that effect, revising that. Then the other question is, should we incorporate in that one? There's also an urgent need for parks and open space to, I'm losing a word here, to meet the needs of this growing population or something to that effect.
I agree and it's really in alignment with what the IES EIS plan stated as well.
Okay.
Oh, I would concur. I was kind of starting to think about how we'd like something like we need to maintain and increase parks and open space commensurate with the housing growth so people have, you know, green spaces to enjoy as we densify as a city. Just kind of thinking of the great cities of the world where they set aside parks. So how do how do we capture that in a couple of sentences? I don't know if people agree with that, but, you know, as you get a little tighter, you want a little space to go, breathe some fresh air and walk your dog.
Feels like another bullet to me, but, you know, defer and it's and it's really tough. We shouldn't try to draft in a in a meeting like this. I think we're giving ideas to the staff. They'll they'll draft something to us and we'll come back. But I want to be sure that the the ideas that the commission is interested in presenting to council are represented here, so. All right. So with that, I think we would move then to the so again, number eight. How do we go from eight to seventeen?
And why is seven in red?
Yeah, and seven's in red, speaking of formatting.
That's where I'm not sure how detailed we're getting.
Yeah, well, yeah, they they should be, yeah.
Seven red, could we add it?
And I'm in the I'm in the actual Word document that that is the the draft that staff will be working through.
Okay.
Tomorrow and and Friday to get this wrapped up.
I understand.
All right. So we won't harp on that. So the next three items, which in the document that are before us are seventeen, eighteen and nineteen, I don't know that we would have comments on other than to, you know, we certainly have an exhibit from Ms. Agar. I see she left, but do you have a copy of this? Okay, so that will be included. And the testimony received tonight, we'll talk about that'll be updated. So then moving on to the conclusions, there are three conclusions here. Let everyone have a moment and see. Any comments on those conclusions?
I guess a comment. It's very, very brief and concise, which I really love. And I imagine it's supposed to be that way. We're sort of just kind of, as a word, blessing it as a planning commission, I imagine, saying, yeah, we've consulted with it with with you and and these three items are enough. Just asking because I don't know, I haven't been through this before. I've certainly read them before, but I haven't been involved in helping create one.
And, you know, conclusions can can typically respond directly to findings, so we can look to to expand upon those as you've discussed tonight. So, you know, if we're adding something about the need for for open space or or parks, recreational open space, we can we can add a conclusion that that's responsive to that saying, here's your finding, here's your conclusion, here's your finding, here's your conclusion. We could probably combine a few of them because it is it is meant to be a little bit more concise of a section, but we can we can expand upon that. That sounds okay.
Commissioner Robson, yeah?
Yeah, my my only other question is, how is the plan then attached to this? Is it the slides that are then attached to this once we have our our choice, alternative three? Are the slides then incorporated or is there a how does that work?
So it would be basically everything within the the draft comprehensive plan, all of the elements as revised with a with a packet for next week that would include, you know, if we if we move with the hybrid alternative, that would then be incorporated and built into the the final draft for the fall. So you should be able to, in the fall, see that. Okay, here's where here's where the changes were made in this land use element or the land use element or the the housing element if there was a change from what's what's currently posted, so the current draft form.
So all of those items would be the referenced Exhibit A here?
Correct.
Reference Exhibit A.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm hearing general consensus that I'd like to, well, please proceed.
Yeah, I have a recommendation. I'm not going to provide the verbiage, but I was wondering if we could add another bullet that just really stresses how much how much attention is given to the impact. I mean, I've been talking about impact, we've been talking about impact and mitigating impact for so much. Really, I really appreciate all the work and all the materials that we have to make sure that everything that we do as we grow really has the lesser impact, negative impact, I should say. And this really comes from someone who grew up in Mexico City, so there was no comprehensive plan. So I can totally appreciate all the work that's behind it and I really would like to highlight that because everything that we have will be utilized to mitigate impact as implementation happens.
So I think I heard, oh, I'm going to infer from from what you said, Deputy Director Gates, that we would then have a finding about the environmental impacts and then a conclusion that this process has, you'll get the right words, but attempted to mitigate those to the extent reasonable, feasible.
Right. We can we can we can play around with that and try to to come up with something that's getting it to to this point. Obviously, there's going to be some analysis, there's going to be some.
Sure.
In the fall that that evaluates, you know, what the what the regulations, the subsequent regulations that come out of this, which, as as Jesse mentioned before, that are already in place, that that are mitigations, are there additional changes that need to come about because of of these changes that that establish those protections in the code?
Sure. And recognizing where we are in the process, this is the draft EIS. The final will be based on the preferred alternative and then to the extent specific mitigations are required based on that preferred alternative, they'll be identified in the final EIS as well. Is that correct?
Right.
So any other comments on the findings before we and conclusions before we talk about the So I've heard that the hybrid alternative is the one that I'm seeing general heads nodding. So when you draft it, that's I don't know how you're going to identify it, whether you're going to call it hybrid or call it alternative three, but whatever you call it, that's that's where the commission is leaning. Commissioner Robson?
No, I.
I saw your hand on the button.
I'm just lending my support. I, you know, I'd like to see in the next step, we have another meeting to come and address it. So, yeah, I think that that's an important follow-up, but that's it. I just like my.
I like to be at the ready.
Okay, I tried to determine what to call on people and the finger on the button is just one of the signals I look at.
Commissioner Sills, I would like to see the numbers, though, and how it aligns with alternative two in particular, which I assume it'll be better, but I just would like to sort of see it on paper and see them all lined up, especially with regards to the middle housing, the multifamily housing and and what that will actually translate to in both counties.
Okay. So to kind of review where we are, we've closed the public hearing for its public comment, but we are not going to conclude our deliberations tonight because we'll look for you to come back with clarification based on what you've heard. And then at the next meeting, we will conclude our recommendations and take an action and make a recommendation. Any other feedback to give staff before we move on from this? What do we call it? We're suspending the hearing or we'll just hold the hearing and reopen it next July 3rd?
Yes, that's 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 correct.
All right. So with that, I think we'll we'll, oh, sorry.
And thank you, Chair. Sarah Gustafson here. I have a question for staff. We've received some written public comment on the comprehensive plan and I think there's a wealth of great ideas in there. I'm wondering, how do we plan to address these ideas? Would it be helpful for the planning commissioners to highlight some that we think should be priorities because there are quite a few great ideas in there?
So we are kind of going through the written public comments in more detail right now. Part of those, the intent is to essentially review them and incorporate what we think makes sense based on what we've heard from you into the revised plan. If there are specific ones you would want to see in there, that would be good to know. I don't I don't know from a process standpoint with planning commission meetings if that happens in a formal setting or if they they can just send them to staff. I have less experience with that, so. But yes, those would be great to know about and those will be incorporated into whatever kind of final version of the plan comes out in the fall that that would be with the the kind of this this hybrid alternative would eventually become a preferred alternative essentially, and that's what we would study in the final EIS. So those would come out together with the final adoption happening after the FEIS has been issued.
Great, thank you. Might send an email.
But if there are specific things that you want to be sure don't get dropped, do send that to staff.
I will. For example, I think Commissioner Westerbeck had mentioned including the urban three study and putting it side by side with some of the comprehensive plan, and I would love to see that.
Commissioner Lever?
Yeah, this actually sort of got me thinking about like decision-making and then how do we determine which direction we go if not for July 3rd or any time soon, but I would love to really see what was the review process and then how the comments were used or not used so that also we can really make sure that everyone knows that we're hearing and and when we go one direction versus the other, that it is clear of why why we take the direction that we're taking, because otherwise then we're just perpetuating the idea that we're people are providing comments and then we're just, which that's not the case, right? So.
Yeah, all of the formal comments we've received will be responded to in the final EIS. So we have all the comment letters and they're getting marked up to identify specific comments within each letter and then those get responded to in the final EIS. If they are related more to like a specific policy in the comp plan, we would then note that that was considered in the revisions. And I believe that the a version that comes out in the fall would essentially kind of accept the tracks that are shown in there right now for the goals and policies, which are tracking from your current adopted comp plan. And then we would show the new tracks that have been made so it's really clear what you. have been made, so it's really clear what changes have been made since the draft release in April.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Gustafson here. I really appreciate Commissioner Levar Ortiz's concern that we have a clear idea of how we will handle these comments. And with that in mind, I wonder if we could explain right now the current public comment process. Is it closed? Is it open, especially for our audience here? Thank you so much for staying with us. How they might wish to comment or submit comments?
So the formal comment period on the EIS closed back in May. Comments up until the close of this hearing, so the hearing portion has been closed, the hearing is continued for deliberation. So there's the technical answer, which is, comment period is closed, but this continues on for the rest of the year. So there is still the opportunity for input to be provided. We're not going to turn away a commenter. There will be public hearings in the fall to go over the final draft. So we'll run through this again. This is the warm-up for the fall version with the final draft, after the final EIS has been completed, and prep, to prep city council for adoption. So there's still opportunity to provide comments. And as we kind of narrow and diverge on this final preferred alternative, it becomes a little bit more clear on what are the questions, you know, how are we moving forward to a final, a final plan that'll guide the city for the next 20 years, including, you know, the implementation process and the check-ins and all the steps that we'll be going through in the background even after December, so.
But two process comments. After the commission makes its recommendation and the hearing is closed, we recommend it to the council. They will have their own hearing, correct?
There's no hearing for council in July. They will deliberate on the recommendation to give us a final go-ahead. We want to make sure that they're on board with what your recommendation is, and then that's what we will carry forward.
Okay.
And they will have, they will hold their public hearing, formal public hearing in the fall, following...
Okay. But there would be opportunity to comment at the council meeting, as there always is.
Yes, absolutely.
So, and the second comment is, I'm a few years away from my last EIS that I was involved in, but we had something called a responsiveness summary, and that's kind of what I hear you talking about, where you go through the comments and you specifically identify how it was responded to, and that'll be part of the document.
Right.
So just to let people be comfortable with that. All right. Well, thank you. So with that, I think, oh, Commissioner Gustafson?
Commissioner Gustafson here, and thank you for your patience. When it comes to providing responses to people who have come to visit us, I was really excited that we received an invitation from Duamis Tribe to visit at the Long House and discuss some of the issues in the comprehensive plan and in the letter that we also received. And I'm wondering, how would that look if we were to do that? What would the city staff recommend?
Well, and to go further on that, that struck me as well, and the immediate thought is how to work that in the context of the Open Book Meetings Act, if we have a quorum of the commission there. So if you need to think about that, you certainly can, but it was a very interesting offer that none of us were enticed by. Commissioner Westerbeck?
And would we coordinate that with council? We're interested in going as well.
Okay. Yeah, we can think that through, making sure we can oblige and make it work out.
In the context of applicable law?
Yes.
Any other comments before we continue this hearing and come back to finish it up next week? Seeing none, I think we'll move on to our next item, which is reports from members. Members have anything you'd like to share with commission? Seeing none, reports from staff? Anything for us?
Nothing today.
Well, I bet wrong. I thought this one would go long, but it hasn't. So there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the planning commission meeting.
Second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
That said, the meeting is adjourned at 7:55 this evening. Our next meeting will be July 3. Thank you all, and I want to thank staff in particular for all the work you've done on this and how clearly responsive you've been to both the public and the commissioner comments. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.